Welcome to the Mattewan Aberdeen Public District Committee of the whole meeting on January 9th, 2022. Time is now 6:30 PM. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to put fans notice up and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Mattewan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertises in 1977, 2022, and the Asbury Park Press and Star Ledger. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Mattewan and the township of Aberdeen and the Mattewan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this world where liberty and justice are law.
Ms. Case, can we please have a roll call? Ms. Rayner?
Here.
Ms. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Bro?
Here.
Ms. Warnke?
Here.
Ms. Martinans?
Here.
Mrs. Stoller?
Here.
So now we're going to jump to the board president's report. As many of you have probably already heard, last week there was a terrible fire in one of the apartment complexes in town. Unfortunately, several district families were affected by that. And the district has worked with the towns, the Red Cross, the Rain Foundation to help the families in their kind of need. If anyone's interested in helping the families, the district recently established an account to help district families in need. It's the MARS D Cares. And donations can be dropped off at Central Office at Cambridge Park here. Also, some of the school PTOs like Lloyd Road and Mam's are also collecting gift cards for families. As a reminder, preschool and kindergarten registration began today. Information about the process can be found on the district website. Also, there is a career fair happening at the high school on January 20th for high school students during their lunches. And we will have professionals in cosmetology, art, law, medical, dental, education, military, first responders in attendance. So it's a great opportunity really for the students to kind of learn about other fields and career paths. That brings us to, tonight we're conducting the board vacancy interviews within the public portion of our meeting. Thank you to all the candidates that are here. We had an overwhelming response, which is great for the one-year unexpired term. And I have to say, it really was an impressive turnout because just looking at the resumes, everybody has such a diverse background, people from all different fields. And I think you could all help us, so that's great. In terms of the process and how it's going to work, first, we're going to start off with the interviews. Ms. Pantaleo will lead the interview process. We'll interview each candidate one by one. And we'd like to ask the other candidates to, there's some, perfect. Yeah, so the others will sit in there until it's their turn. After the interviews are complete, the board will deliberate in private session prior to returning back to public session for a vote. And just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates and good luck. So with that.
I'm going to find out who's going first.
First is going to be Ms. Baya. Just wanted to reinforce that the public is allowed to be, the audience listening. It's just the candidates, since we're conducting an interview process, we thought it would be helpful for each one, one by one. Thank you, Ms. Baya. I'm Danielle Pantaleo, I'm the board attorney. I'm going to be asking you the questions, the board members. There's six questions. The first question is, why do you want to be a board member?
I have three young children in this district, but I have to work to have the voice of the children to be heard and diverse backgrounds and thought process as well.
Thank you. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
I am a head of HR for the fourth largest department in the city. It's named Sumitomo through the trust thing. It's a little hard to put out, I know. But with that, I manage all working member resources and all the expenditures for human resources, all the budgets for employees, staffs, et cetera, as well as all of the events that we hold. I think my total budget, I can't even remember them, but it's a significant amount. It's probably $400,000 or more that I spend annually. So with that, I have about 500 employees also that I'm managing and making sure that we have consistent programs and paying equitable salaries, being diverse as well. So I think all of those different skills would be helpful.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child, as you said, if you're free. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
Again, human resources, so I make a lot of unpopular decisions. One of them, namely, just because we're in, I guess, coming out of COVID, was our COVID policies in terms of everybody had to be vaccinated. We had a lot of people that did not want to be vaccinated for their own reasons, whatever those were. But explained to them that this is our current policy and that this is what we're following. We did not terminate anybody, so anybody wasn't vaccinated, just had to work from home. But there was an obvious shift in the way that people interacted in the office versus working from home and being remote. So I think with that and having, I think I had semi-monthly conversations with them about, hey, did you get vaccinated yet? It was very helpful in terms of that. And in turn, we actually have a 99% vaccination rate.
Good segue. We've just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have ever foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
I think that we have to have great teachers because they're influencing everybody. And then with that, those great teachers, they will develop a great curriculum and based on the guidelines of this state course. But with that, I think that the teachers need to be adequately paid as well as having programs to train and up-train and upskill them so that they're consistently being improved upon, learning the newest and the best techniques so that our children are always getting that.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I've looked at it briefly, yes.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
If I was elected now, probably yes. But if not, then I would probably think about it a little bit further.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Baya.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Pronounce your last name for me, please.
Bayok.
Bayok. I'm Danielle Pantaleo, I'm the board attorney. I'm going to be asking you six questions that the board members put together for tonight. Number one, why do you want to be a board member?
So my daughter is a kindergarten, just started kindergarten over at Stradmont. I am a local president for my, up in my district, I'm a teacher. And I'm very involved with the board up there. And I see how important the board is to the town and to the schools and to the students. And it's important to make sure that we're the ones that are going to make sure our students, that our teachers and our staff get, and our ESPs and all them get what they need to make sure our students get what they need. And I just think it's probably one of the, outside of actually teaching inside the district, it is the most, probably one of the most, in the whole town, probably one of the most important jobs in the whole town. Not just dealing with school.
Thank you. Mr. Bayok, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Again, like I said, I'm a local president, I deal with, I deal with the board in my district all the time, so I have a good idea about how it works, what it's there for, what it's supposed to do. And I bring knowledge on the side of being a teacher as well. And understanding what it goes into, what goes into becoming a teacher. Plus, I lived in, I grew up in Mattewan. I went to the school to read grade. I moved away, my wife and I moved back 20 years ago, and we live in Aberdeen.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that you, that may not be popular or may be even less than helpful for your own child. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
So, as, I make a lot of decisions in my, my district. And there are a bunch that are unpopular, there's nothing I can do about it. I'm just going to make the decision that is best for my, for the people that I'm working with or for at that time. And my, my, I've always lived by the fact that if I can sleep at night after I've made my decision, I can live with my decision. It doesn't have to be popular with everybody else, people don't have to like it. But if it's a decision that I, I think is right and that I think is best for the situation that I'm in, I can live with that.
We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
The school district has a responsibility to make to hopefully get their students to become citizens of this country that can work with others, can, that make themselves valuable to the, to the country at large. Because the whole point of education is to make, is to teach, to teach children what it is to work in this country, to be part of this country in many different ways. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what your beliefs are. If you feel that, if you feel that it's important to do, trying to think about how the word is. But it's, it's, it's to make, to make our children, one day we're going to, one day they're going to take over this country. One day they're going to run, they're going to be up here. And we want to make sure they're, they're capable of making the right decisions. And that's a big part of what education is. It's, it's, it's making, it's having our children, it's teaching our children to read, teaching our children to write, do math, science, social studies, all of those things. But the end result is, we want to have our children, one day grow up and be able to do better than us. And that's what teachers are there for, to make our children better than what, what we are.
Are you aware, Mr. Bayok, of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Yes, I already, I'm on zoning board in town also, so I already do the disclosures. And like I said, I'm very, I'm already very involved with different boards and the different things that I do. I'm very ethical, I, I, I can sleep at night. And I understand the time commitment that is involved with this. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think I committed the time commitment because I do have other obligations. And they can take time as well, so. But my belief is, I want to be here, I want to make sure that this district continues to be as great as it is for all our children, but especially my child, who goes here, and moves around here for probably her whole educational career.
Okay, now without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Yes. I would, I, I don't think I would do this now if I didn't have a touch of making this a longer-term commitment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Ms. Cashin, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. I'm Danielle Pantaleo, I'm the board attorney, and I'm going to be asking you the questions that the board members put forth for tonight. There's six questions. First off, why do you want to be a board member?
I would like to be a board member because I would like to be more involved in, you know, the district I live in. I'm a teacher and educator, I'm very passionate about education. And I really want to just see that all students are represented and advocated for, not just my two children. I specifically have been really passionate about the preschool, which has been slowly expanding and just, you know, really making sure that all students in our, in our towns have access to education. I feel it's very important, and I would like to be part of that and advocate for that.
Thank you. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
So, being in education, I feel like, like I'm really interested and know a lot about curriculum and programming. I think that it can be helpful to know, you know, working in other schools, different, you know, highlight different things that maybe we can just, you know, bring ideas here. Or the opposite, things that maybe have not done well or, you know, not highlighted, and look at those experiences as far as what you can bring here. I also have my degree in educational administration, so I really have high expectations for administrators, whether it's superintendent or building principal, things like that. So I, I would just really, you know, hope that that experience and knowing that would, you know, be an asset to the board.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may be less than helpful for your own child, if you have any in the district. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
Like specifically in education, or you're just?
Um, just in general. If you had to make a decision that was not well received by colleagues, friends, and whatnot, does that have to be regarding education, just in general?
Well, I think that what's really important is like, so I guess the experience I'm thinking is I'm an interventionist and a coach, so sometimes I have to tell people some changes I'd like to see or some things they could do in their classroom, and I think that's really difficult. People may take it personally. And at the end of the day, what always helps me in driving what I want to do is that what we're doing is best for what our students need and not necessarily, like, it's not about hurt feelings. And the principal of my building has been really helpful with that with me and that he could very like, just, he could tell people how it is and it's no hard feelings. Because at the end of the day, he's like, this is your job and we're here for the kids, so it doesn't matter if you agree with that or you may not like it. But this is like the rationale. So I'm really big on just helping people understand decision-making and really always bringing it back to like what it, what it's really about.
We've just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
I think that the school district has a great responsibility. I think that my first thing is safety. We want all the students that come through our district to feel safe, whether that's on a social, emotional level or on a very physical level of, you know, with all the shootings. So I think that's the priority, is that our children are safe and that, that there's high-quality learning. I think that that piece is, a lot of people have different opinions about what could be considered high-quality learning or the standards or everything in that piece. But I think it's really important that a district is, and a school board is very clear and transparent on what's going on and what's going forward. People don't want to feel left in the dark. So I just, and people that even that don't have children in our school district care because their taxes go to our school. So they have a, you know, a stake in there, they want to know that things are being, you know, are physically responsible. So I just, I think that we have a great responsibility as a school district to keep our children safe and to help them all grow and learn.
Okay, thank you. Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Sure.
Okay. And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
That depends on how this evening goes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Cashin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Cataler. Danielle Pantaleo, I have six questions that are questions of the board. Number one, what, why do you want to be a board member?
I am very interested in being a board member. As you may know, I have two children in school. The Mam's Middle, Mattewan Aberdeen Middle School. They're both in the eighth grade, graduating to go to high school next year. I thought that this was a great opportunity to get to know the school, the board, and how, how our kids are learning and doing every day. So basically, I thought that this was a great opportunity. One of my children, I have both in the same grade, they're 18 months apart. My son, my son had a learning disability when he was in the first grade and was left back before we moved to Aberdeen, which was about one year ago now. So I've always been very close with both of my children and staying on top of what they're doing at school and all of that. So I would also, I've been advocating for him ever since he was a child and I would like for him to find his voice and learn to advocate for himself. So that's also a main reason as to why I decided to be, want to be such an intricate part of their learning experience.
Thank you. And so what specific skills would you bring to the board?
So I think that basically through my working experience, I've been with my company for five years. I work as an internal audit coordinator for my department, which is 10 to 11 people. I'm fortunate to work directly with my, with the SVP of the department. So working directly through him, he's able to guide me towards creating budgets for my department. Once those budgets are created, we, and the team is traveling or arranging whatever expenses they're paying for around the month or around the year, I'm comparing the budget to the actuals. That is one of the things that we do. Then I'm also paying invoices for my department. A main part of my responsibility is testing against our company policies. So if there's like, an example would be a policy that says that everybody in each department is supposed to make sure that the users in whatever system they're using are updated every six months. I'm the person that is making sure that each of the departments are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's just an example. So I would say those are my three main roles. And then, I guess, we have more like administrative tasks that I work on on a daily basis.
Okay. Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child or children in the district. Can you give us an example of where you've had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
So that's a difficult one. I think that an example that I can kind of use for that is that, being that we're new to, I say new, but we moved here last year. We had a brand-new experience assimilating into the school system there. So, an example that I'll use is like for my son, for example. When he did have an issue through the school, not always listening to what he's telling me to do and like trying to find out what is happening through the teacher or through the principal or through the, through the people that are in charge to find out what's happening. So that might have not been as well received as family, but at the end of the day, I think it worked out as a learning experience for himself, doing the right thing.
Thank you. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of the school district in educating their children?
I think the, the role of the education system, I was.
Right, the, the role of the school district in educating their children.
I think the role of the school district is one of the most important, if not the most important, because that funds or fuels whatever each of the schools are doing. So, and, and ultimately that affects each of our children. So I think it's very important.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I am not yet fully aware.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
I have not thought that far down the road yet, but I would be open to it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cataler.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Good evening, Ms. Gershler.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I'm Danielle Pantaleo, I'm going to be asking you six questions that the board presented for this evening. The first one is, why do you want to be a board member?
I want to serve my community. I want to focus on the area that I have a skin in the game of children in the school district. I want to be able to help other kids in the school district. Some of the things that the school board does well, I'm very proud of that. Some of the things that we need to do better, I'd love to be able to help them with that. I want to be just a resource for the board, want to give back to my community. And pretty much that's why I would be a part of the board.
Thank you. And what specific skills would you be bringing to the board?
My, my children will not agree, but I'm really a good listener. I communicate very well. I agree, disagree, I hear both sides of whatever is happening for that moment. And I can come with like a really impartial judgment. And my new motto, when I go out of the house and here, is I actively agree, disagree, we can talk about anything, you know? I just have, we're here to serve all kids, all diversity, in purple, yellow, and green. And if we are here to do that, it will be amazing.
Thank you.
I was meant to, of course.
That's okay. Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child within the district. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
My son had a horrible fight with another student. He was bullying another student. And the incident was very bad, the young girl was very upset. And it was a moment, what I thought was great was I could teach him another person's view and perspective on the world. He had called this Asian young lady a drunkard or anything. So my husband and I swallowed our pride. We went to the business owner and we apologized. And we left him there to wash pots the rest of the afternoon. He was not very happy with me. You know, his grandmother was like, what are you doing? And so it was very unpopular. He didn't like me very much. But I thought, if we keep in mind why we're doing things, what is the goal that we're trying to accomplish? It may not be comfortable for the moment, but you look at the greater good that you're going to achieve by making an unpopular decision. And that should be your guiding light, honestly. It's uncomfortable.
Thank you. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
Educating your children. Educate your children. I really don't even want to do politics. We have young people to teach and guide. That's a job in itself. And all the nuances that go along with that. Can we just do that? It's immense job, right? There's a lot of people volunteering time, right? Going home with homework to prepare for class the next day. A lot of people do a lot of things to do that. Can we just do that? Notwithstanding, yes, the board event has become the battleground for everybody. I love it. Let's welcome all the opinions. Let's talk about it. I have no issues with it. But at the end of the day, the job is to see each child and offer them the best education we can. Here.
Ms. Gerschner, are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I want to honestly say no. However, I'm a woman, hear me roar. I have two jobs, I have three children. I am a part of the Madison Education Foundation. I, you name it. I will, this decision to do this after some personal issues, this decision to do this, to continue being hard and putting myself forward, to be part of the board, to not come lightly, to not come lightly. So I know the sacrifice that I'm going to have to make to the customer.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Okay, so there's a deal going on at my house, right? So I'd have to go back to my bosses and I'd have to say, okay, guys, can you withstand another campaign? Can you miss mommy for an extra month period? I think if I get a seat on the board, it will definitely give me the exposure. I'll need to make that decision in the future. And the training, I would really weigh the fact of bringing someone new on the board. If I may get the training involved and the cost involved, that's also like, is a positive for me to run because it's hard to spend that money and then have the person walk away. But yeah, I have bosses to go back and talk to about this, to be totally honest.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Kounar. How are you? I'm Danielle Pantaleo. I'm going to ask you some, six questions of the board today. Why do you want to be a board member?
I want to be involved. I have, I'm a nurse, first of all. And I have two daughters in the district. I'm one here at Cambridge Park for a second year here and one at Lloyd Road. And I just, I really want to learn more about what's going on. I want to help make sure that the children are getting what they need, that the teachers are getting what they need, that everyone's sort of like.
And what specific skills would you bring to the board?
So I have a background both in, I have a master's in children's literature. I previously worked in marketing for a children's publisher. I also have a background in, not, not education, but something along those lines. And then as a nurse, just health, health background. Sorry, I hate saying it in front of people.
No, that's fine.
Just I, I know with everything that's been going on the past couple of years, health and wellness has been a huge issue that is on the top of everyone's minds. I feel like I could be of use.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less helpful for your own child in the district. Can you give us an example where you had to make a decision that was not well received by colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
Just in my job, I work as a part of a team and our goal is always to do what's best for our patients. And in some cases, that means, like if you see that someone is doing something that maybe isn't, you don't think is the best approach for that patient or if you see that something's been missed, you need to bring that to the attention of the rest of the team to let them know that something else could be done. I have been in situations where a doctor, a doctor didn't want to send a patient out for, the transfer to a hospital that they had vital signs that were concerning. There were other things going on. They felt that it could be handled just with our staff there. But it was an issue that really needed to be more urgently dealt with. And I brought it to the attention of my nurse manager. And maybe ended up transferring the patient out. Maybe it's just something that sometimes you have to go against what, or yet someone else's wishes are.
We have come through an extraordinary year with challenges that no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
Making sure that they have the resources available to provide them with what they need with just providing access to education on a library, not necessarily limiting what they're seeing. Just making sure that everything works smoothly, that things get done, that everyone has access to information.
Are you aware of the time, the training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I was looking over the School Board Association website. I do understand that there's a lot of training involved. I know I can absolutely put in the time.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
I think so.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kounar.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Mazzio. How are you? Danielle Pantaleo, I have six questions to ask you on behalf of the board. Why do you want to become a board member?
I still want to become a board member because I have a background in education and I think I would be able to bring that to the table to really support the offerings. In particular, I have a background in STEM and I'm passionate about bringing theater science and education and technology and science kind of work forward because the Johnson of the future are more based in science. And also I think my background in data analysis would also support decision-making related to finances.
And this segues into the next question. What specific skills would you be bringing to the board?
Okay, so in particular, something that is, I guess, unique about me is I started in Airbnb, so I'm familiar with real estate contracts. Also in terms of my research background, I'm involved with like material transfer agreements with other contracts like that. In terms of, I guess, my mathematical backgrounds, I'm aware of like statistical computing programs and can kind of do advanced mathematical analysis. I could do basic computational models and stuff like that to inform decision-making.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child, if you have any in the district. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
Okay, so I guess a decision that I had to make that wasn't well received was when I decided to leave my PhD program. The very first time I was enrolled in PhD program, I decided to leave. It was actually ultimately for my own personal benefit. My mom wasn't happy because she wanted to do a doctor. And I did decide, though, that is something I'm going to do eventually. But at the time, I was experiencing hearing difficulties and some other issues. I decided it would be possible to step back and kind of work on what I needed to work on before I could move forward.
We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
So I think the most important thing is to stay informed about issues and both from like a factual perspective and the opinions of parents and families so that you can really take all of those different like qualitative and quantitative factors into consideration as part of the decision-making process. And I think being informed goes for like, you know, staying in touch with your neighbors to reading online, to, you know, attending board meetings.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Yes.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mazzio.
I was about to say good afternoon.
That's okay. I started at the meeting by saying good morning. It's been a long day. Good evening, just to recover. Danielle Pantaleo, I'm going to be asking you six questions on behalf of the board this evening. The first question is, why do you want to be a board member?
So three, three different reasons. When I saw the posting, I saw that some of the qualities you were looking for, I thought that I had possessed and brought a different perspective. My son is also in the school district, he's in special needs. So I thought I brought a different perspective to it with special needs and also my background and what I do outside of, you know, my everyday job.
And what specific skills would you bring to the board?
I'm good with budgets. For my, I work in emergency management. I work for a gas utility in Brooklyn called National Grid. So I've dealt, for 30 years, I've been dealing with contract negotiation, budgets, emergency management, working with internal and external stakeholders from the public to Public Service Commission, and also negotiating with unions and working, just working with people as a whole.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or even may be less than helpful to your own child within the district. Can you give us an example of when you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
So when the advent of COVID started coming around, we had to, we are not a business that can work from home. And as you can imagine, all my staff wanted to work from home because that's what they saw going on outside, because everybody was working from home. My wife wanted me to work from home. My mother wanted me to work from home. It's just in emergency management, what I do, you couldn't work from home because there's certain aspects about job, technology, certain types of notifications we make up to senior management that we have to do. And it has to be in the office, it can't be from home. Difficult time because there was nothing you were going to tell these people, your employees, your family, that was going to give them any comfort. Because here's this epidemic and it's affecting everybody. And we're telling you, you have to come to work. And then I'm telling my family, I have to go to work and potentially bring this home to my family. So how you handled the feedback was giving them, giving the employees and letting my wife know that we were taking every precaution possible. You know, we had all the equipment that they needed from sanitizer. We were having deep cleanings done for the office. I was coming home and, not to get too breathless, my wife was making me strip in the hallway before I could even get in the house because she's like, you're not bringing any of those clothes that you would have worked in. And I'm like, okay, all right. So I think that, you know, tough decisions are part of what I do every day. You know, and it's just how you, how you structure that response. Taking the feedback, keeping an open perspective, but also understanding sometimes at the end of the day, that decision has to stand.
Thank you. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
You have a tough job in the sense of you have to balance the needs of the school district with the community, with the students and the teachers, and everybody else that's involved in the middle there. So I think that finding a balance that works for everybody is kind of where that lies, driving education, driving the best for the students, but also keeping in mind that you have to work within budgetary constraints, you have to work within the interest of the community.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
No.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gerschner. Good evening, Ms. Osborn.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm Danielle Pantaleo. I'm going to be asking you six questions on behalf of the board tonight. The first, why do you want to be a board member?
I would like to be a board member because I was already a board member and that I feel like I made a difference being on board. As a person of color and of community, I think it's important to have diversity on the board.
And what specific skills would you bring to the board?
So I'm a part of the Aberdeen Township Requirements Board. So my skill set gave me the passion to look for different things as far as ways to save money in the district, equal-friendly options, things like that, recycling. So that was my skill set that I came to the board with. Besides being a mother of five and having three children in the district and two grandchildren in the district, it was a passion of mine to make sure that we're recycling the way that we're supposed to because in the township, we receive a tonnage, which is money that we get returned from the recycling that we send out. So if our schools are recycling the way that we need them to, it builds tonnage and that money can come back into the community. So our township has money that we receive every year. And because we are now recycling more than we were before, the money goes up. So the money that we receive in the township can actually come into the school for education or the recycling receptacles and things like that, so.
Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less helpful for your own children in the district. Can you give an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? And how did you handle their feedback?
So being that I was on the board during the pandemic, Deloitte decision to advocate for the children who needed special services as far as different kinds of masks and different type of protective equipment, things like that, like that that was there. A lot of people were not in favor of opening the school and having our children come in with masks. They were not in favor of certain things that we had implemented. And so we were advised and we moved accordingly to what we were advised to do. It did go against some people's beliefs. We took into consideration what that was and those who were able to opt out, opt out of certain things. Also with sexual education conversations and topics, the board did a great job with their superintendent on implementing the option to opt out of certain things and to be updated and giving clear transparency of if the parent decided that this was not for them, they had the option to not do that for their student.
We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
I believe we're a public school district. So being a public school district, we are guided by the state. I feel that as long as we do what the state mandates and directs us to do, we're doing our job. We're not a private entity, so we can't make rules and decisions that are outside of our scope. However, when it's able for us to do that, we do do that and we compensate with what's according to our district. So sometimes we have the option to look at things and be advised at certain things. But if it doesn't apply to our district, we're able to tailor it so it fits our district. So we're a public school system. And being a public school system, we are mandated by the state. So I feel like if it doesn't apply to a student or their parents are in disagreement of it, then you always say, write the governor. That's an option because this is what we're supposed to do as a public school.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Absolutely.
And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Osborn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Pashwa. How are you? I'm Danielle Pantaleo. I'm going to be asking you six questions on behalf of the board tonight. First off, why do you want to become a board member?
I want to become a board-
I want to become a board member because at one time I actually had the fortunate circumstances to have been and had a chance to serve. And community service is a very important part of what I do. I do sit on a couple of committees, like KIAAC, which is the inter-agency committee, and some other youth organizations like the Youth Hub. And so I know the value of giving back. And I have a young man who's eight years old who is in the school district, and I'm very proud of what he does, and I'm very proud of what his school does. And I can honestly say, Clintwood is where he attends, and I know I want to be a part of something really special which is going on here. And there are some really important initiatives that I really care about that are already in a direction, are already happening, and I want to be included in making the school successful. It is very successful, but I want to keep making that inertia, making it better, making it better, helping, and really bringing what I have to the table because I do have a lot of county connections and I come from a counseling background. So I bring that lens, which is very helpful, I think. I work in private practice in Colts Neck and Manalapan, and then I also work as a district SAC in fourteen county schools. And I know that why I want to sit on the board is because CTE is important also. So I work in the vocational schools. I know that college prep is really one arm, one piece. CTE is another. Early education is another. There's a lot of different spokes on that, and I think that with my experiences, I bring that diversity to the team, which is really helpful.
Okay. And what specific skills would you bring to the board?
So I've been on a lot of committees. So I'm a joiner. I'm going to be just upfront and that I'm really involved in doing a lot of things. And some of those things are for the school, and then some of the things are outside of the school. But I've been on the transportation committee, which has been really important because that's a really big funded thing. The busing is very complicated for Madawan. So I've also been on the district goal setting and strategic planning. And I know that I was one of two, I say family, community members that showed up to the initiative to help get police officers in each school for safety. So I've been on a lot of different committees and also clubs. So I've been part of the PTO in Clintwood. I'm the membership chair there, and I just know that if you get me, you get somebody who will come. I'll show up, I'll be in my school. And I will also have as much energy to bring to all those different committees that are really essential in making things run well and making things better and driving student success in a way that's.
Thank you. Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or even be less than helpful for your own child within the district. Can you give us an example of where you had to make a decision that was not well received by your colleagues, neighbors, family, or friends? And how did you handle their feedback?
So I'm really self-reflective to a flaw sometimes. I think it's part of being a counselor and an educator that we're always reflecting on what we do carefully. But having a child with autism has really made things difficult, the unique parenting style. There are things that I've had to contend with that have been less than favorable circumstances that I've been, you know, had myself in. I also know that recently I've had to juggle a lot of things. My husband's out of work right now, and I would say that being the breadwinner in the family is probably a unique situation, too. So I'm kind of balancing a lot of plates, and I find that I'm always willing to do the right thing. I don't always know if it's going to be the popular thing, but it's the right thing because at the end of the day, I have to look at myself and not blush in the mirror. In my professional life, I had to leave a professional situation because of an ethical dilemma that I was faced with, and I did make the right decision. Not popular, big deal, but it was what I had to do. So the fallout can be a big risk, but it's always going to be, you know, doing the right thing because it matters. And it doesn't just matter to me, it matters to the community. So if you think of it in those terms, I'm not afraid to stand up for what my thoughts are and what my beliefs are. I'm also a unicorn in my family, by the way, because we have a diverse group in my family, and I'm not always in the popular choices, but I know that I do what I do because I care.
Thank you. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
Well, in educating our children is the number one thing we could do. It's the one role we have as parents, too. So when we look around in the room, we all have, you know, our children, and that's, all of us have that same, I think each of us have that, is like our main goal is to make sure our kids are successful. Some of us have to work harder because our kids don't learn the same way, or maybe they have to learn in a different way, or maybe they have to take it at a slower pace. But I do feel like we're all in the same boat going towards that goal of getting success, whatever that looks like. But for me, it comes down to emotions, and it comes down to focus, and it comes down to the love of education. If you take a look at my son, he comes home from school and he's like, I got the Poos Award for being respectful. And then I'm just in awe of what they've done to support his good decision-making. So I don't know, I guess at the end of the day, those are the things that really matter. It's really what little things that they're doing that collectively make this so special.
Thank you. Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics, law, and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I've done it before, so that's not a problem. And I don't think that I missed but one meeting the whole time that I was the board member because I took my responsibility very seriously. And I know that I have three jobs, two part-time and one full-time job, but I know that I'm able to make that commitment. And I know for me, it's a lot of breathing. So you get whatever materials, budgets, complexities, community participation, and you just have to take the time and make the time. So sometimes that's late at night when my son's asleep, but I know that it's something that I can do and balance and do well. Not just do, but do well.
Thank you. And without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Yes. The reason why I didn't run, by the way, is because my husband was battling cancer. He was at Sloan Pennering in New York, and he had major surgery. He had stomach cancer. So I would have run. It would have been my intention to run. I ran the last seat and I was unsuccessful, although I got a lot of votes. But it crushed me that I didn't, for my son and for the community, because I really feel like I care. I was crushed. I would have run. I was geared up to run. I was in the process of getting my signatures when my husband really, we found out that it was not going to happen for him and that he needed major surgery. So the idea of a campaign at that time was just not possible. I couldn't do it. So I took care of my husband. He's a survivor. He's cancer-free. And so it is my intention to run. If I'm successful here, that would be great. Wonderful. And if I'm not successful, I would run for the open seat, and I would be happy because I got to meet the other candidates and really feel good about it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pashwa.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. And as I said earlier, the resumes were impressive here, and you all speak is even more impressive because you're on the spot, you have to answer these questions, and I thought you all would be great. And now we know a little bit more about each of you because you can see it on paper, but until you really hear from people, you know, it just, it can change things and things. You get to know people better. So with that, we will be entering into the executive session. Be resolved that closed session be convened for the purposes of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed in public, and the reasons for such a reality subsides, although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the session. The executive session is estimated to be approximately forty-five minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with this action will take place. Can I get a motion and a second to enter exec session?
All motion. I'll second.
Call a favor?
Aye. I'll move on.
Can I get a motion and a second to return to public session?
All motion. I'll second.
So thank you all for being so patient. Apologies, I know it took a while, and that's because we really did have a lot of great candidates in the mix. And unfortunately, for this one-year unexpired term, we can only pick or, you know, nominate one person right now, but we do encourage everyone to please remain actively involved and just know that you're all great and can serve the community very well. So with that being said, the board would like to nominate Ms. Gershner to fill the unexpired chair for the African seat. We will, can I get a motion and a second?
All motion. I'll second.
All right.
It was first.
Thank you.
And do a second.
It could be made. Okay. And we're going to take a vote.
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Rarke?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Solly?
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, so we will be in touch with more information for the next day or so. So thank you again, and please do remain involved and join committees because there are committees that do come up here and there. We've got the security one currently active. So we do encourage you all to do so. Sure.
Just not to go on tangent, but a couple of people talked about the security committee when they were interviewing. We're going to finalize our last meeting for February, and the attorney that's going to be writing the second question will be there to answer any general questions. Everybody has it, and at that point will know when that second question's going out to vote. And I would encourage everybody here to be an advocate for that second question. Anybody who come across that wants to talk about it. I can't myself become a cheerleader for it because of the laws that exist, but I ask everyone in this room to please be a cheerleader for that. And thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight. I greatly appreciate when you see a turnout like this, that means you all care about what we do. And I encourage you to keep pushing forward and get involved as much as you can because every little bit helps. And to think that it doesn't, you're mistaken, every little bit helps. So thank you very much.
With that, we will move to the rest of the agenda. We have curriculum and instruction. Ms. Perez?
Good evening, everyone. Under curriculum and instruction, we're asking for board to take action under the items under A, travel as listed, and B, other, items one through four. That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. I'll second.
Student services, Ms. Perez?
And under student services, we're asking for board approval to take action on the following items listed under items one through seven. That concludes student services.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. I'll second.
Personnel, Mr. Lieben?
Thank you. Good evening. And we have a couple of action items this evening. Action item number one is a walk-in, which the board has. So the walk-in item is for appointment for the 2223 school year. This is a new hire as listed on the walk-in item. And action item number two, which is listed on the regular agenda as number one, home instruction for the 2223 school year, student ID and subjects as listed. Both are for action. The remaining items are for the regular action meeting, which would include the board to approve items A, B, C, one through nine, and D, one through three. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Lieben?
We are recommending to the board to approve for a first read, policy two, four, three, one. So that's the first read policy. That includes policy.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. I'll second.
Finance, Ms. Case?
We'll be looking to take actions on items one through four, and at the next meeting we'll be looking to take actions on five through thirteen.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. Second.
And any questions or comments from the board on any of the agenda items?
Mrs. Solly? Sorry. Yes? Okay. I just wanted to comment, I saw Mrs. Berberetti is retiring, so I wanted to wish her well. She's been with us for so long. She was my kids' teacher. So I'm happy for her, just wanted to wish her well, and it's, you know, she will be missed. She was such an asset. She's been here since, I think, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. So anyway, she had a long career with us, and just a thank you, and she also was on negotiations and did all that stuff, so thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, this is on the finance agenda, number nine. Just for the benefit, there are a lot of people in this room who are on the strategic plan committee, and I was just hoping that maybe, not taking a lot of time, but what's the difference between number nine's district goals? Like, how does that relate to, or does it, to the strategic plan that we just did? Because although they're great goals here, they're different. I just didn't understand why they're, why they're different.
So strategic goals are a five-year plan for the district, while district goals are a one-year plan for the district. So the district goals come from meeting with, where we had Mary Ann Friedman in August, while the strategic goals are set up, go over multiple meetings and agendas that we went through last year to set us up for a five-year role.
I think my confusion was because it looks like five-year goals. It's like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Thanks. Got it. Now it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Sorry. I apologize.
Don't worry. I was just about, I was just about to say, well, then the data. Correct.
And then, Mr. Lieben, do you mind just reviewing what the Madawan movement team is? Because once you explained it to me, I thought that was great, and I wasn't aware we had that.
So this is part of our Aiko School Program Plan, and the Madawan Movement Team is a group of staff who meet regularly to discuss how to celebrate student achievement and student success. And so as they meet and they recognize students for different achievements throughout their academic success and participation in school, the committee comes up with ways to celebrate the success of kids.
And one more question, sorry, or not question, but I know a board member had written in regarding the athletic policy, which I believe will be modified for the next round. So if you just don't mind reviewing, what will be added in for that?
Yeah, so the policy that's up for first read, for the athletic policy, what's been included based on a couple of questions was, so one amendment to the policy requires that the athletic director present to the superintendent and the board, transportation schedules for athletic events and competitions, including dates, times, locations, et cetera. The board members asked, could we include some specific dates for that? So that's included now, and it was only for question notes. It's a quick summary before each season. There's a deadline that the A.D. has to present to the superintendent of the board, and I believe it's July for the, before the fall season, October before the winter season, and then probably February before the spring season. So that there are some hard deadlines, and we expect to see those athletic schedules to the board.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? No? Okay, then we're going to move on to public comments on agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to cycle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. Speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments. The board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Any public comments, questions? Oh, sorry.
I just have one question, Ms. Osborn, one zero nine county group. What was the walk-in item?
The hire, first.
Yeah.
What was it? Business office, bookkeeper.
Okay. All right. I just want to take this time to congratulate Shelley, if you can give her a hand clap. She ran her race, she did the work, you know, she had her booth set up, Aberdeen Day, and she actually did the footwork and did the things that she was supposed to do when we ran for election. So it is a blessing to see her be nominated and be able to win the seat. So it is a win-win for our district. So everybody else that was here, that came out to advocate, the meetings are open to the public, and you see there's nobody else here but us. So come out, advocate for your children, it is really important, and they do listen. So don't let this be a deterrent just because you didn't win your seat up here. November seats are open, come out. There's a lot of activities and events that's posted from not just the school your children attend, go to another school your children are going to attend for next year and see how the programs and things are ran. To my ladies, members, thank you so much for your love and your support throughout the years that I've here. This is not goodbye because I'll still be here, so thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Questions, comments? Okay, then we're going to take action on agenda items. For curriculum and instruction, we have A and B, one through four. Okay, and then we have student services, one through seven. Personnel, we have one as well as the walk-in item. Policy, we have a first read, and finance, one through four. Ms. Isles?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Gorel?
Yes.
Ms. Warrenke?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Spohli?
Yes.
Okay, any unfinished business from board members? Any new business? We actually do not need an executive session number two, so with that, can I get a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
All motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.